I will call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, March 14th, 2023. First item of agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chantet?
Here. I'm actually en route as well. I'll be there shortly.
Soffa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Uer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here.
We have 13 out of 14. Alderman Lehman had let me know that she was not here tonight. Next would be items that are removed, added or changed. I know we are not going to have a presentation from the community garden tonight, so item number nine will be removed. Does anybody else have anything? Okay. Next then would be matters from the public for items not on the agenda tonight. I recognize everybody here, so you know what you're doing. All right, then next would be the consent agenda. Dan, want to read that, or you want me to do it if you're driving?
Nope, got it here. Just pull in a lot. The consent agenda reads as follows. Resolution 2023-45-R, approval of the 2023 zoning map. Approval cow executive session minutes for November 1st, 2022 personnel matters. Approval cow executive session minutes for November 15th, 2022, selling price of land for sale. Approval cow executive session minutes for December 13th, 2022, collective bargaining and personnel. And approval cow executive session minutes for February 28th, 2023, the purchase of real estate. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion by Chantet, second by Soffa. Roll call, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman absent. Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to 0.
Thank you. Up next would be item 6. I will open the public hearing that was continued from February 14th of 23 on a revocation of the conditional use for Cramps Crash Champions at 2080 Main Street. Ordinance 2304. Walk through that.
So just to give a brief update, staff has been working with Mark Kioski, the attorney for Crash Champions, and have been making progress on the proposed action plan that they outlined some of those steps at the last month's public hearing. So we've basically gotten to a point where we believe we're just finalizing some language on that particular action plan. And we were in communication with Mr. Kioski earlier this morning. So once that's complete, we'll be able to send that to you. As I noted in the staff report, essentially, staff's recommending that we continue the public hearing for one month to give additional time to address those items, as well as continuing to observe to make sure that compliance is continuing to be met out there.
And I'll just say, personal experience, I've been out there and watching it, and I have not seen, you know, what was there before, there now. So I'm happy that they've cleaned, at least cleaned up the front part of it, and, you know, we'll get the rest of the stuff they have to work out with you done, and I think we're fine at this point. Anybody else have any comments? Scott?
Yeah, also, the applicant, or not applicant, the attorney could not be here tonight because of a personal matter, but he was going to try and be online in case there were any questions. But he was apologetic that he couldn't be here in person because of that. So, you know, it's not that they didn't want to be here in person, he just couldn't.
Sure. Okay, so at this point, then, I think we'll, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until, you have the date?
30 days.
For 30 days?
April 11th would be the next meeting, closest to 30 days.
Okay. We'll go to April 11th, then, on that. Anybody have a problem with that, or are we okay with it? I think they're making an effort. Let's, the chance to get it cleaned up.
Second.
Roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to 0.
Thank you. And then I think we could just simply table the next ordinance to the April 11th meeting also. We need to vote on that. Okay, then we will move on to item number 8, which is approval of a Class J liquor license application for Imagine LLC doing business as Imagine Batavia at 550 North Randall Road.
Hi, good evening, council.
Evening.
The Batavia Police Department completed a background check and investigation to determine whether Imagine Batavia, to be located at 550 North Randall Road, and the operations manager, Thomas J. Seitzinger, might be suitable to receive a liquor license in the city of Batavia. All required documents have been submitted by the business, and we have found no issues which would preclude the business or owner from receiving a Class J movie theater liquor license once the certificate of occupancy has been issued by the city of Batavia. I believe there is somebody to hear from, Imagine, that would like to just address the council.
Come on up. Just give us your name.
Ante Reisman.
Okay. Okay. Just need that for the record. Go ahead.
Okay. Our location in Batavia, we're very excited to be part of the community here. Every community we go in, we are not just a theater within the community, but we strive to be part of the community as well through different charitable ventures we have in all of these many communities. At this location, we plan to offer a, what I call our premium program, which gives all the bells and whistles that we offer. So I'm very excited about this. We also have a duck pin bowling lanes, which should draw a lot of business, not only for Imagine, but for the city as well. We have a track record of bringing in communities outside of the community we're operating. And so not only will we see Batavia locals at this location, we'll be bringing in locals from around that will be flocking to our theater and will help support the surrounding communities, or the surrounding community and businesses ecosystem that we'll be part of. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
The only one I get is, when's it open?
Yeah.
Our target opening date is June 1st, and then that will be followed by a grand opening date, which is a big party that you won't want to miss. And we always have a charity that's attached to our grand opening party, and all proceeds from the charity go to that charity. All proceeds from the party will go to that charity.
Excellent. Cool.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Chantet, would you like to make a motion?
I would move that we approve a Class J liquor license for Imagine Batavia.
Second?
Second, any additional discussion? I would just make the remark, being a neighbor, I can see the construction from my bed, and I've been not restful this year. It's been a tough year for me, and I appreciate all the hard work you guys have done. So thank you. Clerk Coltrul?
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman absent. Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to 0.
All right, thank you. Move on to item number 10, the discussion on Prairie State and the Sierra Club.
In tonight's council packet, I did include a copy of Sierra Club's new report entitled "Out of Control: The Deadly Impact of Coal Pollution." City Council had requested, upon receiving that report, to have a general discussion this evening. I just put together a list of potential topics. I do know that a couple of individuals would like to make presentations tonight, so I don't have anything more formal or any sort of presentation prepared. I'm just turning it over to City Council for discussion.
I know we got the presentation, and I don't know, Susan, did you want to come up and make that? Okay. Okay. Sure. She just volunteered you. Come on up and start.
Speaker, can you take two and pass them down?
Speaking, I assume you can hear me okay in the microphone? I don't need to make any adjustment to that?
I think I can hear.
Excellent, thank you. So first off, I want to take a moment and just thank the council. This is the kind of times we live in now, you can never take that for granted. This is awesome that people like you are willing to step up and take responsibility, and I am eminently admirable that you choose to do this, whether you agree with any of my policy positions and insights or not. The fact that you are standing up for your community and doing what you think is best for them is an awesome thing, and we should never take it for granted, and I think we should all stand up and say thank you again and again. And I also like to thank Mr. Holmes for taking the initiative to start a discussion on energy policy and stuff in the city. I know the original concern was about the Sierra Club report on Prairie State and pollution, but it really, he had a list of about 10 items on there. There's a lot of things to be contemplated on in the nature of our power supply, how we get power, and what is happening in the world. So I don't really want to dwell on that too much, but I do want to highlight the fact that air pollution itself is a significant problem, no matter how we measure it or which study you look at. And the references I passed out there, there was a Harvard report last fall that 1 in 5 persons in the world die from air pollution. There's also a Lancet report there, they tend to disagree. They say it's 1 in 6 die. So I don't know how we will get all of those statistics lined up in order or not, but it does go to show the point that it is still a very serious concern and a major problem that is considered air pollution. So we do want to keep that in mind, try to minimize that as much as we possibly can. I have a little story I'll start with. It's my climate change coin story. So you go home, you won't remember anything else about tonight. You remember the guy talked about some kind of coin, and I call it the climate change coin because that's usually the first thing we see. But a climate change coin is actually the product of burning fossil fuels, and it's two-sided, like all coins. And on one side, you burn fossil fuels, and you get carbon dioxide, and you contribute to the climate change problem. On the other side of the coin, something we frequently forget about, is you burn fossil fuels and you create air pollution with its health impacts. And frequently, these kind of discussions and conversations tend to separate those completely. I like to hold up this coin as a reminder that they are both intimately tied and related to each other, both the pollution and the climate change effects. It's the climate change coin. If you don't remember anything else from tonight's presentation, remember that part. That's all I want to say about the pollution stuff. I have that in there. I wanted to make a brief talk on carbon capture sequestration. I won't go into that. I could do lots and lots of hours. I've been spending the last six months of my life enmeshed in carbon capture sequestration studies and reports. I actually participate with a national organization called the CO2 Plenary that helps to disentmate information on carbon capture and sequestration. But the simple point that everybody wants to know about is why the enviros don't think it's a good thing? So that's probably the simplest way to put it. If you're going to take carbon capture, if you're going to take carbon out of the smokestack, doesn't everybody want to do that? Isn't that better than nothing? Why would environmental people say it's not helping the climate? Well, the easiest way to describe it is to acknowledge that we already have too much carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. So we already have started climate change, and the heat accumulates, so it's actually an accelerating thing as long as we have too much carbon dioxide in the atmosphere. All other greenhouse gases too, but we'll just call it carbon dioxide. That's the one most people are familiar with. When you do a carbon capture sequestration project, what they do is create more carbon dioxide, capture some of it. The rest that they don't capture goes out into the atmosphere and actually increases the amount of greenhouse gases that are in the atmosphere. So that's where the environmental people will say, it's actually making the problem worse, not better. There's kind of a related operation to that called direct air capture, where they take carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere. That actually would help. There are some mechanical applications that try to do that. The UN report references those as being maybe a suitable thing to do in a couple of decades when it gets to be a little more cost competitive. I saw a video with a guy who's got the one everybody sees running in Iceland with all the big fans going on. Instead of about 750,000 of his units stationed around the world, they might capture 10% of the emissions that we have now. So that's really not a simple, easy thing to do. It is a possible thing to do, but it's far off. The one that actually is out there that does work is natural carbon dioxide removal. You may know it as trees and forests and prairie lands, all of these things. We put about 5 gigatons of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere every year. The natural world takes about 1 gigaton right back out. So if we would cut back by 4 gigatons, we'd probably approach being closer to where we were before. But because we've been doing that already for a century, there is so much in the atmosphere. Every little bit more that we add makes it even longer and longer before we will ever get it back down to where it should be. In the meantime, we're approaching what are called tipping points. Large environmental effects that'll happen, like a melting glacier or something, won't really impact us, but those kinds of things cannot be reversed. And worse than that is the prospect of cascading events, where you start to get one major event happening on top of another major event, neither one of them being too much out of the ordinary, but the fact that they happen at the same time gets them to be a little scary. And those are the kinds of things we are approaching, and those are the kinds of things that you cannot reverse and come back from. By the time it becomes blindingly obvious, it'll be way too late. The fact is, we're already pretty much sure these things are real and happening. I mean, when I say we, I'm talking about the larger community. I live in Geneva, so I am not a Batavia resident, and my grandparents weren't born here, but I have lived here for about a decade, and I work with the League of Women Voters, Central Kane County's Climate Action Team, and we've taken upon ourselves to try to help all three communities here to find out what it is we can do with our current power situation to try to minimize these kind of problems. So carbon capture and sequestration in and of itself is not going to be an easy fix for anything. In fact, it's going to cause more problems than it solves, and hopefully it would be something we can avoid. Third point is grid. Let's just call it the blockade in the grid. So everybody would like to know, we can't do anything yet because we don't have enough clean energy. It's just not around. What are we going to do? And we need so much power. I'm just going to read a couple of sentences from a search I did just this afternoon, looking up what's happening, where's all this stuff at? And here's something from E&amp;E News in the summer. It says, "There's currently over 8,000 active projects in the Interconnection K around the country, representing over 1,000 gigawatts of generation and more than 400 gigawatts of energy storage." That's from the head of the FERC, FERC, Richard Glick, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. I had seen him elsewhere refer to that as the tsunami of clean energy that is coming. From November last year, NRDC reported, "There are about 1,300 gigawatts of new resources, primarily renewables and storage, waiting to connect to power grids across the country." That's more than the combined output of all the power plants operating in the United States today. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission blames the backlog on rules put in place more than a decade ago that made it easy for a small number of large power plants to connect to the grid, but made it difficult for a large number of small wind and solar plants to do the same. The result is gridlocks. Projects now face an average delay of nearly four years to get connected. And that number seems huge. We won't see all of that anytime soon. Only about 20% of it ever survives the wait in line, and eventually they lose their lease, or other things will fall apart, and the projects just have to end. However, the point being, that is a recognized problem. There was a time when we didn't have enough clean energy. Now we have cheap clean energy in abundance as we build it. We didn't have batteries to utilize it. We didn't build all those batteries for the utilities because we didn't have much clean energy. We now have a lot of clean energy. We're now building batteries. Now it's stuck at the grid. So you can see a thing happening here in our larger economic situation, where over the decade, it's expanding and it's moving down the line, where now the backlog is the grid itself. The problem has been recognized and already addressed. Over the last couple of years, several federal agencies are already starting to work on it. There's money going to it. There's money from all these large federal programs. In a few years, probably take 5 to 10, before a major change happens, but it will happen. And when it does, it's going to be a huge change. This isn't going to just be a transition. They call it a transformation. So we should start to prepare for it. Speaking of being prepared for it, this was the point I wanted to bring all of this to in the discussion, was we've already missed the opportunity. For the last decade or so, you've been buying, I believe, more electricity than you've needed to use and had no way to do with it except sell it on the open market for whatever the price it would bear. Had we planned, we could have started to use that in the city. We could have been heating buildings, running cars, whatever, something like that, but it was not on the radar that this was something that would be good to do. It was just assumed it was to be excess and not to be needed to be used, when in fact we can do that. One of the things we could look forward to is to a point when we can use 100% clean energy. If we were to start using everybody with electric cars and heating your homes, your electric department could maybe, I'd ask Mr. Holmes what would happen if everybody used electric cars and heated their homes? Double the electricity, maybe 10 times? It's really hard to tell. We don't have numbers on that kind of thing yet, but I'm pretty sure it would be really huge. If a large percentage of that was the clean energy that seems to be coming, the city of Batavia could go from being 100% coal to 50% clean energy without changing anything else you do with the bonds or the contracts or the power plant. You wouldn't have to worry about any of that stuff to take advantage of the stuff that's coming. So one of the dictates of climate work is to electrify your power supply and then electrify everything else. It's logical and useful where possible, but that's not possible here. We have bonds, we have contracts, and we have convoluted ownership agreements. We have Prairie State. But we can reverse that saying and start with electrify everything else first by switching to cars and heat pumps for our homes and business. That would use up a lot of electricity, and it's really the way the rest of the world is starting to go. There's no reason we can't follow along or even lead in this, rather than wait and be the last to do it. Using electric versions instead of gas is always more efficient, and even if it's supplied by coal. So the opportunity will not come without work, and we should find or create an independent source of information about clean energy transition. It would be best to make this happen as much as possible, as soon as possible, and going out to find the changes that can be made, rather than waiting for them to come to us. The sooner we start, the better it'd be. We're already late. So that was all I had for there. I did have my reference sheets I passed out. If you see those, at the end, number 4, the energy transition opportunity. There was the Inflation Reduction Act, a guide for leaders of public utilities that had come from the climate policy place. There's an excellent guidebook there that is specifically for municipal utilities, and there's one right below it from the APA, the American Public Power Association, from Fall, and that was called the Power Forward Virtual Summit, Leveraging Federal Money to Move Public Power Forward. So those are two different things, talking about trying to access massive amounts of federal money that's coming. I don't know if we'll be able to do that. I wish I could tell you I knew how to do that, but I don't know how to do that. It's a kind of a convoluted, complicated thing, but it's the kind of problem that has an answer to it, that we recognize this, and we should be trying to find out, how do we take advantage of these opportunities? There's going to be more of them coming in the future, and I just think it's something to open up our minds to and look at, how do we expand into these new possibilities and be prepared for the future? That's all I have for now.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, thank you.
Hello, Susan. Go ahead.
Good evening, and thank you very much for inviting the League of Women Voters of Central Kane County to make a presentation tonight to discuss Prairie State Energy Campus. My name is Susan Russo. I am a Batavia resident, and I am here tonight on behalf of the League. I know you are all familiar with the League's voter services role. We register voters and hold candidate forums that many of you have participated in. But the second role of the League is advocacy. We advocate for a wide range of policies and legislative issues that affect the lives of all Americans, Illinoisans, and Batavians. A League decision to advocate for or against a position is made through a deliberative and thoughtful process that includes a thorough study of the issue and building consensus among all local and state leagues. These decisions are adopted, reconsidered, modified, and reaffirmed every two years. They are compiled into a document that is called Where We Stand. There are League advocacy positions that are relevant to tonight's discussion. One, promoting representative government that is transparent and accountable. Two, adhering to the Clean Air Act. Three, encouraging the use of renewable energy resources. Starting with the first position, the League believes that democratic government depends upon informed and active participation at all levels of government. Informed and active participation must involve both elected officials and the constituents they represent. This means that citizens must be given adequate notice of proposed actions, that government bodies must take actions in open meetings, and that the public records must be accessible. With regard to Batavia's ownership of Prairie State and Batavia's membership in the Northern Illinois Municipal Power Agency, Batavia and NIMP do not meet these basic transparency standards of representative government in several ways. First, all of Batavia's elected officials have signed confidentiality and non-disclosure agreements. NIMP relies on the confidentiality clause in the participation agreement to keep information shared with the city council from Batavia constituents. The participation agreement's confidentiality clause dates from a time when private for-profit companies were participants in the Prairie State project. So the League asks, now that Prairie State is owned only by public power agencies and not-for-profit cooperatives, why hasn't this clause been amended to allow more information to be shared with the member municipalities and cooperatives, as well as their constituents? Second, NIMP regularly goes into closed session to address issues that should be considered in open session. For example, in these minutes of a closed session on August 28th, 2022, which were, by the way, released to the public later in 2022, lobbying efforts and the hiring of lobbyists was discussed in closed session. The Open Meetings Act requires the discussion of lobbying to be done in an open meeting. The Open Meetings Act also requires closed session minutes to include, quote, "A summary of the discussion on all matters..." So the League asks, now that Prairie State is owned only by public power agencies and not-for-profit cooperatives, why hasn't this clause been amended to allow more information to be shared with the member municipalities and cooperatives as well as their constituents? Second, NIPA regularly goes into closed session to address issues that should be considered in open session. For example, in these minutes of a closed session on August 28, 2022, which were, by the way, released to the public later in 2022, lobbying efforts and the hiring of lobbyists was discussed in closed session. The Open Meetings Act requires the discussion of lobbying to be done in an open meeting. The Open Meetings Act also requires closed session minutes to include, quote, "a summary of the discussion on all matters proposed, deliberated, and decided in closed session." As you can see from this slide, NIPA's closed session minutes often state that so-and-so gave an update without any information about the topics that were discussed. And finally, several years ago, the city council delegated all of its decision-making authority regarding NIPA and Prairie State to an unelected city employee. While the Power Sales Agreement requires approval of the city council for initial Prairie State financing, disposition of NIPA's interest in the Prairie State project, and acquisition of additional interest by NIPA, approval by the city council on other issues is not required, as is demonstrated by this statement. While Batavia's representative appears to be doing an exemplary job on behalf of NIPA, is it right for one person to have the power and authority to bind Batavia as stated in this quotation? The League understands that the current contracts between Batavia and NIPA and NIPA and Prairie State largely hamstring the city council in what it can do. But there are two solutions that should be considered and implemented in order to further greater transparency. The first is for the city to adopt a resolution that allows the Public Utilities Committee to oversee all information related to NIPA and Prairie State and to participate with and direct Batavia's representative on matters coming before the NIPA and Prairie State boards. Second, the city can adopt a resolution to support the Municipal and Cooperative Electric Utility Planning and Transparency Act. As proposed, this act will require power agencies like NIPA to keep records and give member municipalities and their residents greater access to those records. It will also require power agencies to adopt written policies regarding conflicts of interest. You were provided with the placeholder language for this bill by city staff. This placeholder language will be amended with the actual language of the bill. Unfortunately, I learned this morning that the amended language has not yet been filed. The League is not asking you to support a bill until you are able to see the actual language in the bill. However, I can assure you of two things about the bill. One, the language of this bill is being written by individuals who have a strong understanding of municipal and cooperative utilities. And two, nothing in the bill or the proposed bill will require the closure of Prairie State prior to Batavia's bonds being paid off in or about 2041. And I will let you know when the language is filed, definitely. I will promise to do that.
Thanks. We don't want to be like Washington.
The League also supports the regulation and reduction of pollution from stationary sources in order to reduce local and transboundary air pollutants. The Sierra Club's report out of control shows how Prairie State is failing to curtail air pollutants even with its billion-dollar emission control technology, leading to the devastating and deadly impacts of those pollutants. Since the city does not have on-staff experts in particulate pollution and scientific methodology, we urge you to hire a qualified independent consultant to review and advise you on the studies cited in the report, or at a minimum, reach out to the authors of the report to answer questions you have concerning the report, its analyses, and its conclusions. Finally, the League encourages the use of renewable energy resources in order to implement this goal. The League believes that the environmentally sound use of energy resources must take into consideration the entire cycle of energy production. As demonstrated by this solicitation of interest for a carbon capture and sequestration system at Prairie State, Prairie State Generating Company is planning to proceed with a carbon capture system without the need to consult the nine power agencies that own the plant or the member municipalities and cooperatives of those agencies. All of the scientific data demonstrate that carbon capture is a false feel-good solution to climate change. The following three slides are from a presentation done recently by June Sakara, Senior Research Fellow of the Global Development Policy Center at Boston University. As is shown in this first slide, the United States produces five gigatons, that's five billion tons, of CO2 emissions each year. As of right now, only 0.02 gigatons of CO2 is mechanically captured each year. The amount of carbon being captured today is so small that it has no positive impact on the removal of CO2 from the Earth's atmosphere. There are only 13 carbon capture sites currently in commercial operation in the United States. These are shown in this slide. Carbon is captured at these 13 companies to process natural gas, produce ethanol, and manufacture fertilizer. Only two of the three, excuse me, two of the 13 operations sequester the captured carbon, ADM in Decatur and another in North Dakota. The other 11 companies sell their captured carbon for Enhanced Oil Recovery, or EOR, a process utilized to bring otherwise unusable crude oil to market so that it can be burned as a fuel. There are no carbon capture operations located at or on coal-burning power plants in the United States. This slide shows the seven power plant carbon capture projects that were proposed. Three of the projects were canceled, and another three were withdrawn. The only one that made it to production was Petronova in Texas. Petronova was shuttered in 2020. The fossil fuel industry says that Petronova closed because fracking caused the oil prices to go down. But this is not the complete story. In reality, with falling oil prices, Petronova could no longer sell its captured carbon at huge profits for the extraction of more oil. In addition, Petronova's carbon capture system suffered chronic mechanical problems. It was not operational 30% of the time. Petronova's system did capture as much as 55% of CO2 emissions, but this percentage does not take into consideration the emissions from natural gas turbines that ran the carbon capture system or the emissions from the mining and processing of the coal and natural gas used at Petronova, the entire cycle of energy production referred to in the League's position statement. Factoring these additional CO2 emissions into the calculation, the actual amount of carbon captured by Petronova was only 11% to 20% each year. By all accounts, Petronova was a failure. There is no science, no data, no past experiences that indicate that carbon capture, a carbon capture system at Prairie State will succeed. The push for carbon capture and the promise that Prairie State will capture up to 90% of its CO2 emissions are feel-good marketing campaigns of the fossil fuel industry. There is no such thing as clean coal. Again, the League understands that Batavia has limited options in dealing with Prairie State and its push for a carbon capture system. However, we must not sit back and do nothing. Because climate change and CO2 emissions are expansive worldwide problems, we must do what we can in Batavia, in Kane County, in Illinois, and in the United States, the places we have a say in and have some control over. I suggest a few solutions available to us here in Batavia. They include: The city council can adopt a resolution to support Senate Bill 2421 and House Bill 3119, the Carbon Dioxide Transport and Storage Protections Act, in order to ensure that carbon capture will be done in Illinois only with appropriate permitting, regulations, safety protocols, and the protection of landowners' rights for pipeline rights of way and sequestration sites. Like the transparency bill I mentioned earlier, neither Senate Bill 2421 nor HB 3119 has anything to do with Prairie State's closure prior to Batavia's bonds being paid off. There is another bill pending in the Illinois Legislature that was introduced on behalf of the fossil fuel industry. While it may take weeks for both of these bills to work their way through the legislative process, the League is confident that the Batavia City Council can analyze the difference between them and agree to champion the rights of Illinois citizens, landowners, and taxpayers over the wishes and demands of the fossil fuel industry. Second, the city can educate Batavia electric customers how they can access Inflation Reduction Act money and other programs to improve their home's energy performance and efficiency and electrify their transportation, homes, and businesses. The city can further encourage energy efficiency and electrification through incentives, low-cost loan programs, and changes in its building and permitting codes. Three, the city can join forces where possible with other municipal and cooperative utilities to encourage the use of available and future funding to upgrade our nation's electric grid so that it can accept intermittent generation resources such as wind or solar. The League fully understands that this is a national, not a local, issue. However, when and where local, regional, and state governments can lend encouragement and support for these national grid changes, we ask Batavia to be ready and able to do so. And fourth, while we have been informed that the city's distribution grid is already prepared to accommodate a transition to renewable energy resources, we are not aware of a written grid readiness and assessment plan actually in place for the city. If no such plan exists, the League encourages that one be developed and adopted so that Batavia residents and businesses can be consulted and informed as we move toward renewable resources on a wider scale in the future. Thank you for listening. We understand that we have presented a lot of information for your consideration tonight, and the League looks forward to working together with you to find climate solutions that work for Batavia. Thank you.
That's a ton of information. Having been the one that was here when this started, it's a minuscule amount to what we were originally presented with, and it will take us time to work through that. But I do think that there are possibilities, and there's, you know, a lot of very thought-provoking ideas there. I'm not in agreement with every one of them, especially the carbon sequestration part. I don't think that that works, but that's my personal thought on it. And anybody else has any comments? Ian?
So I guess I have two very specific questions. I'm uniquely situated in listening to your presentation because I would say that...
Ian, pull your microphone down a little bit.
I'm uniquely positioned to listen to your presentation. If you're looking to get through to me, you did so when you picked the man you married. He was my teacher. He was my journalism teacher. He's the reason I am this guy. He taught me at a young age to be inquisitive, to get to the bottom of things. And I will tell you, the very first night I had access to the city of Batavia's email systems, you better believe, Mr. Russo, that I read every executive memo going back to 1940, that night on my computer. It's the first night as an adult I pulled an all-nighter. I have read every memo. And I have two pointed questions. Can you think of a single example of a document that you think that the city council or that the Sierra Club, you don't have to answer today, that you haven't seen that you'd like to see? What type of information is there? Is it financials? Is it strategic? Is it structural? What type of information do you think that we're not transparent about? Because I can tell you, having read this stuff, if you really want to read it...
I don't believe, Mr. Chan, that I am talking about what the city council is not producing. I'm thinking more in terms of what you're not being told about things with regard to Prairie State.
It's only part of it. Because I could also make a case, if you don't think that Gary is the right person or if you think that a, not Gary, if you think...
I have nothing against Gary.
Let me phrase this correctly.
I believe that he is totally honest with you and is trying to do his best. I'm trying to say here that the problem is with the structure that was created by the participation agreement and the power sales agreement, and that it is opaque. It is not transparent. It prevents all of you from having adequate information. Maybe the complexity of the whole situation prevents you from having adequate information, and by virtue of you not having adequate information, the public does not get adequate...
We're on the same side of this argument. I had dinner at a NIPA meeting. I felt very uncomfortable. I don't feel like they were talking to me. I felt like they were talking next to me. I felt like an outsider at my own meeting. I had not signed a confidentiality agreement yet.
I mean, that, just in its face...
For sure.
It's not what representative government is supposed to do.
Would have I been the better voting member when I wasn't also the technical expertise here? I actually felt more comfortable with Gary being there because he knew the questions to ask. He knew how to get the information.
And that's what his role should be.
For sure.
Absolutely.
What I'm saying is, what can we do to give transparency in the structure that currently exists?
Well, like I said, I think you can...
And we don't have to...
See, I don't know how much information you guys are getting, actually, you know. But from what I understand, it's not, you know, you're not getting everything because it's mostly, you know, coming, well, probably it's not coming to you partially because of these confidentiality agreements. And that's what, and that's what the transparency bill is trying to open up because virtually everything is closed. Virtually everything that NIPA does is locked into this confidentiality clause in the agreement and then further down by this confidentiality agreement that all of you have had to sign. And the fact that you sign it so you get some information, I just have a real problem with that. You sign it so you get some information, and it was posed to me, or would you rather go back to the way it was before where they didn't sign it and they didn't get any information? No, there's got to be something better than either one of those two things. There's got to be something different. And that's why that transparency bill hopefully will start moving forward in some degree, maybe not for passage this year, but at some point in time where the Open Meetings Act is not being used to hide everything that Prairie State and NIPA does. And, you know, we should have a...
And, you know, we should have a right to know what our municipal publicly-owned utility is doing, and we don't. We simply don't. It's a farce, calling it a public utility. It is a farce, because it isn't a public utility. It's run by the people down at Prairie State.
And I don't want to sign on to a bill that feels like there are feel-good components to it. I want there to be real change.
Absolutely, but I would say we have to-- this is such a big problem, and I do not sympathize. I sympathize with you completely, but we've got to start chipping at it.
I'm asking you, as the person I work for, what can I do differently other than this bill? Because this bill doesn't change the way I vote. It doesn't change the way I act. What-- and you have to answer tonight. This is something for the future. What types of information can we make more transparent? What types of things can we do with inside the existing structure?
You can't tell me what you do know, so I can't tell you what you don't know.
For sure, but I'm not a good poker player either, though, so--
I don't know. Yeah, I--
I know. And I agree with you, and I sympathize, but I can tell you, look no further than-- and I mean this-- you made a compelling speech 20 years ago when you married that man. You engaged somebody who already had an inquisitive mind going through this process, and I have been there every step. I served as chairman of public utilities briefly and was very frustrated as well. I joined city council like a month after this vote had already happened. I was among the people reading the press releases, reading through, you know, the spin, and I saw what was on the wall, and I was embarrassed at what I was walking into. But I really do believe that we've done the best that we can, which I'm not trying to spin here.
And I would leave it to all of you. You know what you're not getting, you know?
But I don't feel that way anymore, and now, actually--
Maybe--
Right, and--
I mean, glad, I'm glad.
I would have dinner with these people, and I might ask for something better than chicken. I do believe that things are headed in the right direction. And then finally, I believe that the economics are even a little bit better than they used to be. So there's a part of me that says, for all those years, that the first thing people would punch me with is say, "You guys are charging me so much for power. Now I get a thanks for the break on the power bill."
Well, I think that brings us back to the 55 megawatts that we're all paying for.
Agreed.
And, you know, I mean, I personally, and I, just as an example, we pay one more month a year for electricity we don't use.
As do I.
And I know Ms. Newman said, "Well, but our power bills haven't gone up since 2015." Well, I'm sorry. I would rather pay the actual price for electricity I use. I personally don't want to pay less for electricity I don't use. I mean--
I'd like to--
You wish it were a choice.
I'd like to continue this discussion. I would say, if you have some time, I really do want to delve into my two questions, because I would like to move forward. With those things in mind, I'd like to deliver things to you, things that will make you feel like there's more transparency, and I'd like to have eyes that are open when I have information in front of me, so I can look with more inquisitive eyes and, I suppose, more critical thinking involved here. What documents should I be looking for? What clues should I be looking for if something's missing?
Well, I want to just say one more thing about the transparency or the non-disclosure agreement. That agreement, that three-page agreement, is far more invasive and detailed than the confidentiality agreement in the participation agreement. It takes some of the terms in there and expands them out to cover virtually every single thing that you touch with regard to Prairie State. It's onerous. It's truly onerous.
I had to sign it. I had to sign it.
Point out that the non-disclosure agreement means that information can be shared--
I know, I know.
--with the elected officials. It doesn't say--
I do know that, Laura. I do know that.
Okay.
But the problem is--
But sometimes you've said it, that it excludes--
The problem is, it's not the getting you the information. It's then you can't talk to any of us about it. You cannot--
It's a legal document.
I know, and it shouldn't be that way. That's what I'm saying. It should not be that. We should not have that document as a barrier to any one of you as our representative on this city council with regard to our utility. We should not have that wall thrown down between us and you.
And we shouldn't have an agreement for 55 megawatts of power either, but the reality is, we've--
And my point is, is that confidentiality agreement could be changed now.
I don't think that it could.
Well, if there's a will--
Gary, can we change our confidentiality agreements?
Not the confidentiality agreement, the clause in the contract. The contract is always amendable.
It isn't. We actually spent $2 million trying to find out if those contracts could be changed, and they couldn't.
There is an amendment clause in there. There's got to be. Every contract has an amendment clause in it. If it could-- I'm not-- And what you're--
We hired the law firm to find out if there was some way to relieve us of our--
Different. That's different than amending a portion of the contract that talks about confidential information.
You could ask if we can be relieved of our confidentiality agreement, but I'm going to guess that the answer is no.
We're 55--
Well, you know, it might be super difficult.
No, it's not. It's not a super difficult thing. It means being sued by and having to sustain litigation costs where you know that you will lose because you have signed a document that contains promises.
Well, I'm not talking about trying to get out of the contract. I'm talking about amending a portion of the contract. That would open up some of-- now that you don't have privately-held companies that have proprietary interests in the project, why can't that be opened up a bit now?
If there's a specific request, then we will be happy to follow up on that.
That was--
And amendment is too vague for us to pursue.
That's the genesis of my question, is what types of information do you want? Because, well--
I don't know, because I don't know what you're getting. There we go. We're back to circle one.
Working within the structure that we currently have, if there's something that you think--
I'm saying, try to change it a little bit.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
That doesn't provide us with enough guidance to say, "Try to change it a little bit." If you can understand the dilemma for us in terms of trying to change it a little bit.
I gave you two examples, okay? I did give you two examples.
It's a good time for me to mention, and everyone always needs to keep in context, that we are a minority owner amongst three votes in NMPA. NMPA is a 7.6% owner in Prairie State, which means NMPA owns less than 10% of Prairie State. So we would need to convince our two fellow owners and then the other nine owners, other eight owners, Prairie State, to change agreements, which I would see that as an extremely uphill and virtually impossible battle.
And that's-- I think all I'm asking is, if it's not right, are we just going to sit back and do nothing? That's all I'm saying, and I-- I don't want to sit back and do nothing. I'm sorry.
I don't think we want to sit back and do nothing either, but I think we also have to be realistic of what we think we can accomplish.
Right.
And I think the stuff we've already heard tonight makes as much sense to me to focus energy on, to try to move forward, than fighting what we think is an uphill battle we can't win, or we don't think we can win. I mean, I would like to find some solution, some way to move forward and move on from this, and if it takes us 10 years, 20 years to do something, I would like to have something that I think could be a solution and focus the energy and the finances there. And if that's what we have to do, you know, that's going to be a choice we're going to have to make up here.
I think one of the ideas that was brought forth today that is very viable are these programs under the Inflation Reduction Act that are coming to try to encourage our residents to change things over in their home to electric versus using natural gas to-- I think that's a very viable option and worthy of our pursuit, rather than something that just has no likelihood of success, changing those confidentiality agreements.
If I can, just really quick, I'm sorry, Alderman, but I think it's important for the 2023 city council to have just some context of the 2004 city council, almost 20 years ago. I think everyone in this room is old enough to remember that back in the late '90s or early 2000s, government should act more like the private sector. Government should be more like the private sector. That was the mantra. Nowadays, after the last six years or so, it's anti-government. But back then, it was government needs to be like the private sector, and that's the context in which the council acted back then, was to become a private sector employee or a utility essentially and get involved in this big project. That was the context that the decisions were made in.
Ian? Switching over, like if I was going to switch over my electric water, my heater to electric, like me as a resident, I would want to know what is going on. She has a point. If Prairie State is now owned by all municipalities, aren't they under a lot of the same things we are in terms of transparency and open meetings, and shouldn't all of those things be public? And we don't have to answer that now, but the point she's making is, she should, the League, any resident should be able to delve into any of that information if it's owned by all governmental agencies, right? So wouldn't all--
There are market constraints. I mean, we all operate in different power markets, and through FERC, there are market constraints, where we can't talk about-- I can't talk about IMEA's predictions for future market conditions. That's a violation of antitrust. That's an antitrust issue. So, no, you can't-- it is not just open and transparent for everyone, all nine owners. You're crossing antitrust rules. We have an antitrust statement that's read to us literally at the start of every board meeting.
Okay. Just, I'm just trying to think of the big picture of government supposed to be publicly accessed and all of those things. That's-- and again, if you're talking about different states, different rules, I see there's a lot of hoops to jump through and-- but she has a point of these things should probably be open, and I wonder if any of these other residents in multiple places couldn't sue their government to get that
To take Mr. Miller's point, you know, if this were a corporation and we were all shareholders in that corporation, there would be annual meetings. There would be annual reports made available to us. There would be voting rights we would have. And, you know, we would, as shareholders, we would be participating in that company to the extent we want to or are able to, but we're not-- we're not even equal to some shareholder, you know, who owns, you know, five shares and--
There would also be trade secrets. There would also be trade secrets and things like that.
Well, of course, of course, of course there would be, Dan.
The formula of Coke and Dr. Pepper.
I know, absolutely. I mean, every kind of business and entity has that, but we don't even get basic information.
Abby?
The team of us that came to you with the Climate Action Plan, the review of that has been meeting-- had a meeting last week, actually, about some of the federal incentives and state incentives, and also a proposal for maybe some Batavia incentives to do some, both education and trying and electrify the city, to Bill and Susan's points about how that would benefit our residents. So expect that in the coming-- I'm not going to put a timeline on it. I'm not sure when we're going to get back to it, but we'll get back to you.
Yeah, because I think, you know, depending on how far you want to go with that, there are definitely associated costs with that, that, you know, is going to be something that the public has to bear, and that's something that's not going to be-- not going to be nice, not going to be easy. So that's something I think we have to look into.
Yeah, keep going if you want me to. I know we're not necessarily talking about it in detail tonight, and I'm not suggesting that we do so. I just did want to make a comment. Gary, to the point you make in your memo about the Sierra Club being funded by endowments and donations and fees from their members, and how they can't be therefore objective because they have to produce materials that their supporters want. The Sierra Club's mission is about educating and enlisting humanity to protect and restore the quality of the natural and human world, so to say that people are supporting their mission and so expecting them to deliver educational materials related to their mission is very much just stating how nonprofits work and how philanthropy works. And so to kind of, to use it to what seemed, in the way I read your memo, to throw shade at them, that they cannot be objective or they should be discredited for producing materials in line with their mission. I mean, it'd be like, "I support pediatric cancer research," and then they produce some pediatric cancer research, and then I was like, "Well, I can't trust that because you did it because I wanted you to." Like, I just needed-- maybe it's because I work in environmental nonprofit and specifically in fundraising, that to feel like those motives were biased or nefarious in any way just rubbed me the wrong way.
Okay. On that, I think we'll end this, and I think we've got a lot to go over, and I think we'll revisit this when we-- oh, somebody else want to come up? Sure, sure, come on up.
I'm in how this works. Is this--
Okay, that's great. I didn't see you back there.
Can you name a name?
My name is Chad Riggsby. That's R-I-G-S-B-Y. And I think Abby's comment kind of-- I'm going to second that in a few different ways, keeping my thoughts distinct. I live on the East Side, Ward 4. I received a bachelor's science degree from Wittenberg University, PhD in environmental sciences from Wright State University, prior to a two-year appointment as a postdoctoral research scientist at the University of Rhode Island. After this, I was hired by a tree care company to work in the company's laboratory, providing internal and external technical support, as well as conducting research on trees. As per my last count, I've published 27 peer-reviewed scientific papers in journals such as Tree Physiology, Journal of Chemical Ecology, Environmental Enomology, and Ecology. And I give dozens of talks and lectures annually to everyone from academics, practitioners, foresters, educators, students, and homeowners. I supplied that career synopsis to you not to show off or to impress anybody, maybe a little bit, but more to present myself as an expert witness of sorts in the matter of scientific studies. I sat through Zoom calls of cow meeting after cow meeting about the proposed SEJA bill making its way through the state legislature. It was genuinely heartbreaking and frustrating to listen to some of the people speak on this. That entire experience left a bad taste in my mouth, and though I didn't speak up at the time, I'm not going to make that mistake again. So here we are in 2023 discussing Prairie State again, this festering wound on the face of our town that won't go away. Two items were brought to my attention last weekend, both of which I read. First, the Sierra Club's report entitled "Out of Control: The Deadly Impact of Coal Pollution." And the second, a memo sent by Mr. Gary Holm to the mayor and city council dated March 8th of this year with the subject line "Cow Discussion: Sierra Club Report Analysis." I have enough experience listening to these meetings to notice that Mr. Holm often refers to "city staff" in quotes when communicating opinions to council. To this date, I don't know how this city staff is defined, and by reading this memo, and I could be very well wrong on this, I certainly get the impression that these are the opinions of either one person or a very small group of individuals. I must also say that I have sat through too many council meetings specifically on topics environmentally related and SEJA-adjacent, where there are very obvious and open attempts to guide discussions with inserted opinions, followed by statements to the effect of, "We don't make policy. We are just here to provide facts and information." I have distinctly felt gaslit, and I'm done with it. I'm calling out city staff for this memo, written by an individual or individuals who think they know what they're talking about but clearly do not. For the sake of brevity, allow me to break down the memo's criticisms into primary components. I promise this is-- fossil fuels and refer to their report as indisputable fact, I second Abby on her statement earlier. Let me address that by saying, please, let's not pretend the city staff don't have their own agenda with this memo, certainly appears that way. I would also add the goal of eliminating all carbon-based fossil fuels should be on all of our agenda. Younger generations are begging today's politicians to do something, anything, about this problem, because we are the ones who are going to have to deal with it. That's another topic for another time. Next, city staff criticized methodological issues. They have an issue with Sierra Club reports specifying that Prairie State results in 76 premature deaths annually, yet in the same memo criticized the report for being a lobbying tool. News to city staff, politicians do not want to see means, standard errors, standard deviations, confidence intervals, quartiles, effect sizes, P-values, or any other summary statistics. They want a number, and that report provides this. City staff criticized the Sierra Club reports' constructed models as being estimates used to generate new estimates, used to generate new estimates. I hate to be the one to tell city staff this, but this is how model building and extrapolation to alternative temporal and spatial scales works. I myself have done this very type of model building, and it is how we as scientists do this. As a side note, city staff criticized the report for attributing premature deaths solely to coal generation and do not account for other factors. Again, to city staff, it does. The model considers a baseline level of particulate emissions from non-coal plant sources and absolutely accounts for these efforts, effects. Their model only accounts for added emissions from coal plants as stated in their methodological section. City staff criticizes the conclusion of the report writers that Prairie State even impacts Cook County by referencing prevailing wind patterns. I'd ask the city staff if they've referenced a prevailing wind map. I have. Winds can come from any direction depending on the time of year, and Cook County is so populous that it is automatically going to outweigh the impacts of any other county, six states in any direction. Given the population size and density of Cook County, it wouldn't be surprising if accumulated exposure to particulate matter would have the largest impacts on this county. Here's an analogy to help think about this. A multitude of tornadoes touching down in a rural downstate county are never going to have the same economic and public health impact as a single tornado touching down in urban Cook County. Lastly, and I could forgive everything else, I could just sweep aside. Lastly, this is, this is the thing that just bugged me. This memo's criticism, city staff provide nothing, nothing to dispute any of the Sierra Club report. No data, no peer-reviewed publications, no reports, nothing from the EPA, absolutely nothing, other than their claim of common sense and critical thinking. They have not asked for the opinion of an air quality specialist, I have. The contact information for the authors is, authors of the report is in the report. Just ask, invite them to speak at council. In my 12-year-long career as a scientist, I have, if I ever stated because I said so in any one of my 27 publications, I would be laughed out of science. It's fine to be skeptical. I have my own criticisms of this report, but you can't deny the validity of something without presenting any hard evidence or data that supports your criticisms. If the city is going to make decisions on Prairie State and consider this report in those decisions, I ask council to hire an actual expert who can speak on this and not rely on the opinions of city staff. Thanks.
Someone online, Janet?
Yeah, Janet Hirsch.
Janet Hirsch, go ahead.
Go ahead, Janet.
She's muted.
I'm clicking on Ask to Unmute. I don't know if Howard is still on. What I'm doing on the Zoom doesn't seem to have any effect.
First or not, I don't think she asked for, so muted. One last call, Janet, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Go ahead.
Do you have your hand up? Is there something that you wanted to say?
No.
Oh, okay, you had a request to talk. I see your hand was up. Hey, anybody else have any comments tonight? I think we've got a lot to think about, a lot of information, and where we go from here. I guess we'll get back to you at another Cal meeting, get us the, whatever clean legislation they come up with, and we'll go through that and see if we agree with it, we'll vote for it. Okay? Thank you. And thank you for all the time you put into this. I mean, you say that to us, but you guys spent a lot of time too doing it.
Yes, thank you.
I appreciate that. Okay. Want to item 11, which is City Entrance Monument Signs.
Just an update to City Council on the city entrance signs. As you're aware, our installation of the 2022 signs has not proceeded forward yet, although they are being fabricated as we speak. The sign company that has contracted to install the signs, I did reach out to them, knowing that we have additional funding in this year's budget for entrance signs. And I asked their interest in, interest in potentially giving us a price quote for two additional signs. I listed in council's memo the locations of those signs, although since I wrote that memo almost two weeks ago, the location at the southwest corner of Batavia Avenue and Fabian Parkway, just looks like it's not going to work right now without additional engineering and utility work. So, probably right now, tonight, it'd be just the one more sign on West Main Street, and staff is simply seeking direction from council as to whether we should proceed with getting a cost proposal from Aurora sign company, or if we should return and go formally bid on the project for 2023.
Thoughts?
I would, I would say we've waited long enough. If we, if it's possible and we can do this, and you know, we're going to do it eventually, but sooner the better.
Getting a cost proposal, there's no guarantee that we'd go forward with that cost proposal.
Yeah, but exploring it.
Yes.
I think, you know, if it's within the budget that we have available and the cost on one more sign, and get it done at the same time, it's got to be cheaper this year than it is next year.
Yeah, I agree.
But hope.
Thank you.
That was simple. All right, we'll move on to item 12, which is Resolution 23044-R, Supporting Tax Increment Financing. Anthony's coming up to go through this with us.
Good evening, Council. So tonight, I come to you in reference to the Illinois Municipal League model for the TIF ordinance in support of TIF for local government as a tool for economic development. The Illinois Municipal League, IML, contacted member communities to request that they consider passing a model resolution in support of the continuing use of tax increment financing, TIF, in its present form as a primary economic development tool. In the past, Batavia has been extremely supportive of supporting IML, and I'm hoping tonight, this is something we continue to support. As with legislation, it becomes a lot more difficult because TIF becomes attacked, and unfortunately, it's one of those tools that are either abused or used correctly. But Batavia is a community that has certainly done its best to use the TIF as appropriately as possible, and to make sure that development continues on in our community, and there's plenty of examples out there. Tonight, staff recommends the approval of Resolution 23-044-R, Illinois Municipal League Model, TIF Ordnance in Support of TIF as a Local Economic Development Tool in Illinois. Thank you.
I just wanted to mention a few of the projects that have been able to be done here in the city of Batavia, utilizing the TIF economic development tool. It would be the Woonerf, something that is a jewel of our downtown, the improvements that we made to Wilson Street and Houston Streets. And this isn't necessarily one that benefits the city of Batavia, but the Outlet Mall that is out on I-88, that is the Batavia School District, and a project which produced zero children and yet produces millions of dollars for our school district. And so, it's our hope to encourage our legislators to keep this tool as it is, and, you know, find, find other ways to deal with the bad actors who have misused this very useful economic development incentive.
I think any change to the timeframes, which the stuff that I've seen proposed in the past has always been either time fridge cut or, you know, remove it. That just doesn't help anybody at any point. You know, you don't have the economic, you know, impetus to get things done, to come up with money that can help people do that and do public infrastructure and everything else we've used that for within this community. So, I think it's really important. And, yeah, it's not always an easy project to get things done, but when it does happen, it's been really beneficial here. So, I'm in full support of it.
I would say, you know, Batavia has used the TIF well, both with, you know, the Outlet Mall, glad you brought that up. I remember I was teaching at the time and representing the teachers then, and that was a huge shot in the arm that we continue to benefit year after year and will continue to do so. There are bad actors in other places that misuse it, but I don't, I think Batavia, we've used it pretty effectively, and I think I would support legislation to continue that ability.
Yeah, I just kind of piggyback on what Tony just said. In the state legislature, and I sit in on mayor's calls every week, and one of the problems we have in Springfield is there's a group of people down there in the legislature that would like to gut this whole thing and throw it out on the street, and then there's some other folks that want to create some new games down there and maybe cut the school districts out of receiving any of the money. I mean, there's a lot of different ideas floating around there, and I think what the municipal league is trying to do here is protect exactly what we have right now. And, I mean, I think we've been a good example of doing it the right way. We have not gone off and done any crazy stuff with this money, and there's been a few that have. And I can remember having some conversations with the city of Aurora back when the Outlet Mall was being proposed, and the whole thing was, is Aurora had a big problem because all this money was going to come to the Batavia School District. But, that's the way the TIF worked, and you would, you couldn't redraw the lines or move the money or anything else. And they, you know, Aurora needed, the city of Aurora needed that mall for all the sales tax and jobs and everything else it was going to get. So, that was, there was a lot of moaning and groaning down in Aurora about that, I can assure you. And I was in on a number of meetings with the mayors who were trying to do this, and it, it was a real tough task down there, but they got it done. So, this thing has a history of battles around it statewide, and right now, I think the municipal league, with what they're trying to do here is just protect what we have that's a working system, that's legal and seems to be fair. So I encourage us to support this move.
Comments, anybody online? I'll make the motion that we recommend to council Resolution 23044-R, Supporting Tax Increment Financing.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Sulfah. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman, absent. Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council, for your continued support with this. We'll move on to item 13, which is Resolution 23048-R, Declaring Certain Personal Property to Be Surplus and Authorizing Donation of Property. Tony?
Yeah, I'll take it. Mike's online, but I, unless-
Yes, go ahead, Tony.
All right, fine. Yeah, Chief, thank you for the, your memo on this. When I started reading it, I was pretty excited because I actually represent the teachers out in Canlin at Fox Valley Career Center, and I can tell you that the program out there is fantastic, and so, but then I started reading a little further and see one of our mutual aid partner needs help with this, and, so we can help them and eventually help them, so, not to steal all your thunder, you can-
And that's exactly it, Tony. And in, in that regard, we did, we were able to donate a driver simulator to the Fox Valley Career Center, which will assist them to help develop their driving skills for the few, for the engines and things of the future. But we had discussed, as it said in here, we replaced this engine last year with our new Seagray, excuse me, Sudfen engine, and during that time, we had kind of looked out to try to get appraisals and things, and because of the age of the engine and the needed work on it, we weren't getting, we weren't getting offers that were acceptable to us. And because of the list of DOT repairs needed, they actually exceeded the value of the engine or what we'd get for them. So at that time, we did strike a conversation with Fox Valley Career Center, and we're talking to them about donating it, when unfortunately, as it says in the memo, our mutual aid partners, which happened to be Canlin Fire Protection District, which also protects the Canlin School District, and Fox Valley Career Center became in immediate need of an engine. So, in discussing with our partners, the Canlin Fire Protection District and the Fox Valley Career Center, we came to the conclusion that it was best to help assist Canlin Fire Protection by, in this case, actually deeming this engine surplus and then doing a donation. We had had discussions before when we ended up getting our ladder truck, why it's simpler just to do out and out donation or sale than try to lease or lend. There was a little discussion on that, but the liabilities and other factors and costs of it just make it more complicated than it's worth. So at this point in time, what I'd like to ask the council to do is approve Resolution 23048-R, declaring the 1996 Seagray fire engine as a surplus proper, property, and also authorizing us to donate this vehicle to the Canlin Fire Protection District to assist them in their mission.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions, discussion? I would just add, you know, the ultimate end game of helping out the fire science program at Fox Valley Career Center, another benefit to that is it's producing future firefighters for us, and I think that's, that's definitely something that is in our interest.
And we do, we do have a number of members of the Fox Valley Career Center who are also part of our explorers program. They go on to become part of our paid-on call, and eventually sometimes full-time or full-time in the area and do assist other departments, and specifically work with the Canlin, Canlin Fire Department in their volunteer program. So they are an integral part to helping us develop future firefighters in the area.
You know, let me just add one, one thing here. When we got the new truck, the chief and I talked about this, and I think I'll give him the credit for coming up with the idea that maybe we should just donate this thing to the Canlin High School. And I've seen what we've, what they've done with the ladder truck out there for learning how to drive, and I don't think they raise the ladder very often, but the guys can, I think, go up the first 50 feet of it or whatever it is and get some feel for what's going on. So, I really feel that was a good use for that piece of equipment. It was pretty old. This one, I believe, is 26 years old now.
Correct.
But what's nice about this is when we bought this one, we were a little bit short on taking water into the fire district, and so this thing has a 1,250-gallon tank on it. So, this will be ideal for Canlin, for what they, we'll use it for, because they don't have any fire hydrants or water system out there. So they'll be able to, you know, I could see the day coming when they'll say to Canlin High School, well, if we get something good, put some boys on that truck and bring it, bring it to us, because, you know, if you go out there and look around, there's some, there's some very interesting situations in the Canlin's fire district, including one where they, they made their own access onto the Illinois tollway, which, I don't want to go there, but they have one. And so they go out there on the tollway and get involved in some pretty hairy accidents and fires on the tollway and everything else. So I think this truck could be invaluable to them, and- And I'm just very pleased that the chief came up with the idea of putting this all together, because it's, it's the right piece of equipment going to the right place for the right reasons.
I'll just say, being a product of the Fox Valley Career Center a long time ago, that was a really good thing to have donations for stuff. I went through the automotive program out there. And to have that kind of stuff available to you really makes a difference in when you're learning how to do stuff on live vehicles. So it was a really good thing. So I'm in full support of it.
And as the mayor alluded, and obviously knows the history very well, this particular engine was a product of a cooperation between our fire district and the city. And that's why it happens to be set up as a rural pumper with extra gallons, 1,250 gallon tank and a portable tank. And it's, it is designed for rural fires, which does actually help benefit Canville and Fox Valley Career Center in their development program.
Okay, no other discussion. I would move that we send the council with the positive recommendation, resolution 23048-R, declaring certain personal property to be surplus and authorize donation of property.
Second.
Motion by Malay, second by Wolf. Clerk call the roll.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman absent. And Ayazi?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to 0.
Thank you.
Up next is resolution 23046-R, first responder drones. Alderman Chantet?
I'm sorry, my, where are you? We saw the chief's memo from the third. This is regarding Illinois legislation that goes back to 2013, which makes remarks on banning the use of drones. But as we can see, as the technology has changed, the applications have changed, that it's worth taking a look at.
Good evening again. As Alderman Chantet had begun the discussion, the Illinois Freedom from Drone Surveillance Act was passed back in 2013. And since then, the public use of drones has increased substantially. Drones are now regularly used by hobbyists, used by the news media, construction managers, realtors, and others for the inspections of bridges, water towers, and power lines, just to name a few. Law enforcement can use drones to photograph accidents, currently crash scenes, crime scenes. We're also able to search for missing persons. And we're able to use drones if there's an emergency that's underway. Where kind of the big hole is with this legislation is we cannot proactively observe a community event such as a concert or a parade. The act's restrictions on the use of drones by law enforcement unreasonably limits the use of drones for legitimate, reasonable, and safe crime prevention and public safety purposes. The law enforcement leaders have worked closely with state legislators to propose a mandatory language to the act that achieves a better balance between the legitimate use of drones for law enforcement purposes and privacy concerns that underlie its existing regulations. Senate Bill 107, known as the Drones as First Responders Act, as introduced in the 103rd General Assembly, is an example of collaboration between legislators, municipalities, law enforcement agencies, and privacy advocates. And had named a couple already, but some times where we've successfully used drones, not just here in Batavia, but also throughout Kane County, life-saving measures. We just recently had a case where we were able to find a woman who was laying semi-conscious in a field, had been there for hours. We've used drones successfully in missing persons cases, particularly with cases where there might be small children that are missing in a neighborhood. We've used them to take a look at packages and backpacks that were reported as suspicious items without having to have a human being go up to and take a look at, at an item. We have used them over crash scenes. Technology today saves hours and hours of time as far as us having to be out there closing down roads. And then also, we've used them with searching large bodies of water or even smaller bodies of water, like the Braeburn Marsh, which is what we did recently in search of the person that I was just telling you about, that we found semi-conscious in a field. A few examples of incidents where proactive use of drones, if allowed in Illinois, would have been helpful in possibly preventing a mass incident or reducing its negative impact would have... Prime example would be the Highland Park incident from the Fourth of July last year, the Waukesha Parade attack, the Las Vegas concert shooting, just to name a few examples. So the ability to have real-time intelligence information is critical, you know, being able to spot people on rooftops, being able to spot suspicious vehicles and suspicious persons from the air at these types of community events would be a significant asset for law enforcement. Ironically, actually, at this point, if the city owned a helicopter, we could put a helicopter up in the sky with a police officer inside the helicopter. That's legal, but we can't put a drone over or near a community event. So the Metro West Council of Government recently passed a resolution extending its support for Senate Bill 107. And I'm requesting that the Batavia City Council pass resolution 23-46-R to extend its support to well-reasoned measures intended to modernize 2013 Public Act 98-569, the Freedom from Drone Surveillance Act, with Senate Bill 107, also known as the Drones as First Responders Act. So I'll open it up for discussion or comments.
Chief, any comments? Any questions? One of those things, I kind of was torn when I first read it, thinking about a Big Brother flying around over my head, but then I think of all the benefits of it. And, you know, what you just explained of finding somebody out there, that first thing that came to mind was, you know, again, watching it unfold, literally on Facebook or whatever people were looking at, and seeing that that helped, you know, resolve that situation with a good outcome. You know, and that, every time somebody gets saved, I think that that's a benefit. So I'm in support of it.
I still can't believe you can put someone in a helicopter. You can't have a drone.
Correct.
It's much quieter if you have a musical concert.
A little less expensive, too.
And there is, it's not going to change the legislation as far as, you know, if somebody wanted FOIA information, as far as, you know, flight path information and any other information that we would keep, as far as when we're using the technology, that would all be subject to FOIA. And of course, court subpoena as well.
And I'll sneak one in, too. At least it's electric. I know it's too soon, but I need one of those right now.
A red light camera, too.
Yeah. But at least on the red light camera. Oh, you brought that up, so I have to say it. You have to prove your innocence with the red light camera. That you were driving the car. You don't have to prove anything if they're trying to find you with a drone. Hey, somebody want to make a motion, Dan?
I would actually, Alderman Millet, to your point now, you, you're not supposed to text and drive, but you can actually use a typewriter. I would move that we send 2346 to council for approval.
Second.
Motion by... Motion second, any additional discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman absent. Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to 0.
Thank you. Next is item number 15, which is resolution 23049, LMI Leadership Training. Alderman Chantet?
A memo from Wendy back on the 14th regarding a leadership training opportunity. This is for senior staff for ongoing training opportunities.
So just a little bit of background as far as, as you know, we've provided a lot of on-the-job training specific to people's specific departments, for example, public safety, and specifically in people's expertise, whether it's HR, community development, you know, all of those different areas. But in addition, we felt that there was definitely a need for some overall leadership training and an opportunity to also make sure we are building our next leaders in our organization, specifically through succession planning. And so we've been having a conversation for almost a year, to be quite honest, and talking with a few different organizations. And through this conversation with LMI, they provide a very high-quality leadership training program. And so what was attached in the resolution is the proposal as far as we would initially start with the leader, senior leadership team, and then from there, grow and go into the other departments. And so, so while the initial, we had budgeted that amount, and you had approved the amount initial through the budget process, but definitely wanted to bring this forward and let you know is where we were and where we wanted to go with it.
And beginning with the senior leadership team allows us to have those individuals be the coaches and mentors for the emerging leaders in our organization so that we're all utilizing one common program.
Open up to council for discussion. If not, I would move that we send 2349 to full council for approval.
Second.
Motion second, any additional discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman absent. Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to 0.
Thank you. Okay, up next will be item 16, resolution 2347-R, approval of task order number 19 with Trotter and Associates for construction engineering services for Phase 2A wastewater treatment facility improvements. Gary?
This one always gives me pause. Most times, actually, when we award contracts to Trotter, it gives me pause, just because of the magnitude of the work and the cost of the work. Back in 2012, so 10 years ago, we actually brought an RFQ process to city council. We had four engineering firms provide presentations before city council with the knowledge that we were going to be entering a multi-year, multimillion-dollar phase of making improvements to our treatment plan. And the goal back then was to ensure that the engineering firm that we selected was the firm that city council wanted and felt was the most qualified. So since that time, the city has been using Trotter and Associates for design and engineering work associated with our wastewater treatment facility. I'll remind you, I mean, again, as much as this gives me pause, and it always makes me swallow hard when I talk about million dollars, in this case, a $3 million contract, Trotter's design of first phase and then construction of the first phase resulted in virtually no change orders on a 20-some-odd-million-dollar project, which is, which is really unheard of. I mean, they, there's accolades that need to be given there, because clearly they do high-quality work. I think we, we pay a fair price for that work, but we get a fair value for that work. So by no means am I taking my recommendation to award tonight lightly, because it's a lot of money. But Trotter did do the design for Phase 2A. They're intimately familiar with the plans. They're intimately familiar with the actual physical plant. They know where all the pipes are. They know where all the wires are. They know the obstacles that we're likely to face. I'd certainly have my full support to award this task order to them. There will be some design revisions that were needed in order to account for changes that have been made since we approved the last task order back in 2021. They're going to walk us through the bidding phase. By the way, the pre-bid meeting was held here today. That's the meeting where all contractors come together before they even submit their bid in order to ask questions. Then they'll walk us through the construction phase, and finally, the project closeout phase. We're still working on the project closeout phase from the 2019 project, but that has nothing to do with Trotter and Associates. So staff is recommending approval of resolution 23047 for an amount not to exceed $3,081,000 for all the work that I just outlined.
I'm just pausing because I heard that we're not done with the closeout on that. That's...
Well, that's a different...
Yeah, I know that's a different thing, but that's just frustrating that that's not completed yet.
No fault of city staff or Trotters.
Right, I totally understand what happened, so. Your honor?
I would just like to kind of endorse what Gary just said. We've had a lot of rave reviews about what's been created down at that sewer plant so far. I mean, seriously, I've been asked by several of our neighboring cities to bring some of their aldermen or officials over to tour the plant, and our staff's always real nice to do it. I had the mayor of Diamond, Illinois, which is down near Morris off of Route 47. It's a little town, not very big, but they had to put a sewer plant in the business. And she came up here and just could not say enough about how she thought this was such a good thing. And she made the point, she says, you know, this is a decision that's going to be playing in my town many years after I'm dead. And yeah, it's costing us some more money, but people are going to say, boy, they really had their head on straight when the city voted to do this, to put this type of facility into our community. So that's the kind of comments we're getting on this thing.
And it is a huge time commitment, too, to, you know, both in getting the project actually done, and then how long it does last and how long it gets used. So I'm sure we do correctly.
Yeah, and this is work through 2026. So I mean, this is, this is, as you just said, a long, long time of worth of work.
Alderman Chantet, would you like to make a motion if there's no other comments?
I'd make a motion that we approve 23, what's that, 99, for task order 19 for Trotter and Associates.
Second.
Motion second, any additional discussion? Clerk, up, please call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman absent. Ayazi?
Aye.
Malay?
Aye.
Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
And Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried 13 to 0.
That was 2347.
Okay, we'll move on to item 17, which is resolution 2350-R, first extension to the services agreement between Kalani and the city of Batavia. Alderman Chantet? Sorry, Nick, I didn't realize that that was Public Utilities.
What did Melissa...
I know. We got outlighted tonight.
No offense taken.
This is for the extension for a contract that's going to be up in July for the bike share program. This is, if I read that correctly, the funds are not currently budgeted, but... Either through council for discussion.
Anybody else participating?
I don't know. I asked King County, they sent all these agreements out. There's really no obligation for anyone else to participate. However, others participating isn't necessarily determinative of how our program would run if it's somebody who is making a round trip to our bike stands.
Yeah, I guess my only question, though, is, I mean, I would need to see data, because I don't know if that's true or not. I don't know if, how many people did round trips and how many people took it somewhere and then picked up one later. I don't have any data to make a decision on.
And I'm really, I'm not sure that it's worth the time to study it, if, you know, you know what I mean?
Don't they have those statistics? Don't they have those statistics that they, from the usage last year?
They don't have good statistics at all. They've got, like, ridership, so they'll be like, there were 100 rides from this location. And that's basically the only statistics that they provide. They've got a very, very simple dashboard. They've got a very, very simple dashboard. At first, it was just producing rides for the entire system, but now they're able to break it down by the individual stands per month. Is that right, Anthony?
Right.
The bikes are returned ultimately to their, their stations.
Yes, you can return it to any Colony station. So if there were stands in other cities, for instance, Aurora, you could drive down to Aurora, park it in the stand, see a concert, rent a different bike that's in that rack, drive back and drop it off in Batavia. If only Batavia has the bikes, then you're renting it for the full time and returning it to Batavia.
Yeah, I mean, without knowing who else is doing it and without knowing really how they're being used, I mean, I, and without it being a budgeted item, I mean, I love the idea, but it can't just be Batavia, in my opinion.
Last year at budget time, they had an RFP out and zero responses, which is why this didn't end up in the budget. But after the first of the year, they contacted Colony and they contacted a different company and talked them into giving them pricing. And the other company was far more expensive than Colony prices.
And how long can we postpone making, making the first extension before we have to commit?
Till July. When they take our bikes back.
They've sent us an invoice for $12,000 at this point.
Fair, but if we don't, if we don't move forward and forward on it, we spend, what, $10,000 on windmills? You can't throw $15,000 at, at bikes? I'm kidding. I, I like the program.
Yeah, as long as something else comes out. Something else has to come out to pay for it. That's my only thing.
I just have a couple of questions regarding it. How much were the bikes in previous years when we rented them?
I believe that they were $1,200 apiece because we, instead of having eight, we had 12 bikes.
Okay, so it's $1,200 per bike?
Yeah, I believe it was $1,200 per bike was the initial pricing. And the first contract was for two years, and then we did a one-year extension at the same price. Now these bikes are $300 more per bike.
And these would just be regular bikes? They would not be the electric bikes?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, like, I know how much we spent, like, how much revenue did we make on it? Like, we took a loss on this program?
Yes, we didn't even make $1,000.
Okay.
But did it generate traffic? I mean, the, there were people around those bike racks all day, every day, weekdays, weekends. They did attract attention. The bikes moved from rack to rack somehow, so that would kind of give me the impression that they were being used.
The goal, revenue generation or exploring the bike trails and hoping to bring more dollars to downtown?
I think it's to be, create interest and visits to locations with the bicycle, too, that generate revenue for the city, like to restaurants, to events, that type of thing.
Okay. I feel like I remember us discussing the potential for having a sponsor. I don't know if it's too late in the game for that, for this year.
Inquiries have been made, but there isn't any interest at this point.
All right. Oh, go ahead.
So my understanding is we don't know who else is participating in this this year, correct? And there's a chance that if we're the only ones that do this, people would take our bikes and, can they just drop them off in Aurora and not bring them back?
No, you do have to return it to the rack.
Okay.
Set up the temporary racks? So if there was an event in Aurora, if there was an event in Geneva, we could ask Colony to set up? Like, could you set up a temporary rack and then they can, they can?
Or a price, probably.
Um, I don't know. I feel like the geofencing was included in the contract when they talked about it, up to a certain amount of geofenced racks.
Since most of the participants will be using Kane County trails, Park District trails, is there an option? And like you said, we have until, what, July to commit to this?
We weren't given a deadline. In fact, what happened was I received an invoice. And so I said, I don't think I even have a contract with this company. So I inquired with the individual who's the coordinator in, at Kane County, and she said that they've kind of mistakenly sent out invoices before we actually have the contracts in place. And so only at this point have the contracts gone out to all of the cities to consider being part of this. And yet, ideally, you would want these bikes delivered by the end of April.
Yeah, you want them soon because it's starting to get nice.
It's starting to get really nice, so.
So my question is, it probably too late at this point to ask Kane County or Park District if they want to chip in on this because this doesn't seem like this is a...
No, they get their own.
They, who what?
They get their own.
Kane County's gotten their own in the past.
Okay.
I would also point out, I don't know what Colony's rates are for the rental, but we now have a bike store located on Island that rents bikes.
Which I think is awesome. I mean, I'm going to bring it up every single time we talk about this, that I wish we would get the, the e-bike that Colony has offered because...
They're not offering them this time. This is the only bike that they're offering to us.
I got my scooter, so I don't know.
I mean, I got one, but I mean, it's a much lower, lower barrier to entry to walk up and scan and, and pick up a bike than it is to, I mean, I love Boji Bikes and I'm so glad they're there, but it is, it'd be nicer if it was just right there on a rack, that you could just take it out and run. I still support this. I still support participating. I'm fine delaying it a month or two to see who else is going to, not a month or two, I'm sorry. What month is it? Delaying it a minute to see if anybody else has signed out. If anybody else got an invoice, they might be having these same conversations this week.
I think it'd be a hack that I'd like to know how many of the other communities are going to participate before we decide. Okay.
Can you also get those stats, though, on how many from prior?
But I'm telling you, the dashboard is incredibly simple.
But you said that they had it per station picked up.
The numbers aren't good.
It'd be something. It's better than nothing.
We saw, we saw numbers last year and they were terrible.
Yeah.
They were, they were terrible.
Right.
Terrible, like, like, just not very...
It's, it would...
Terrible, except that Batavias were the most used nodes on the entire system.
Or just sparse in terms of what they gave us.
It was, it was meant to be what it represented and what could happen from it. And it was a star. And, I don't know. So just table, table for now then, or just, okay? That was all? Thank you.
Okay. To avoid more construction eyes, we will move directly into project status.
And I have just a few here. The city has reissued its call for sculpture designs for the columbarium at the West Side. Cemetery artists have until August 10th to submit their designs, and then the finalists will have until September 21st to create models. We've increased the commission to $40,000 in the hopes of attracting a diverse group of, of applicants. In Public Works Engineering is working with V3 to finalize the scope of work for Phase 2 engineering and the carriage crest improvements. We plan to have a presentation for you in the coming weeks that will focus on the landscaping within the basin as requested, and then we'll need your direction before final engineering design of the basin can be completed. We are also trying to secure an easement on the Homestead property for that entryway sign. We met with them and they seem very willing to do that. The sign that we have there now doesn't have an easement, but it, so it will be nice to get something more formal in place for the future. And then we are working to finalize the list of streets for the 2023 roadway resurfacing and sidewalk repair program. But I would like to point out to folks that you can go to the city maps, and it's available right at the bottom of the city's homepage. There are all kinds of maps available for you there. What ward do I live in? What development projects are going on? What sidewalks are being repaired in the city? So there's really a wealth of information there and encourage people to take a look at that. And that's all that I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions for Laura tonight? Can we be online?
I want to know who's playing this door.
What?
I want to know who's playing this door.
Sounds like tile. Just breaking up. I don't even recognize it. There's a lot of work going on.
Tile, yes.
Okay. Anybody have any others tonight? If not, I'll look for a motion for adjournment.
Moved.
Moved.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Are you sure?